Good evening, everyone. Tonight is October 28th, 2020, and this is the fourth session of the Stoughton Special Town Meeting. I call it to order. And let me just give you a couple of things I have to say this evening. This town meeting is being held via remote platform Zoom webinar due to public health concerns arising from the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is also being broadcast live through the Stoughton Media Access Corporation. It's being streamed on the SMAC's website and is also being recorded for future broadcasting. I ask you to please rise if you are able and stand with us so we can join me and the rest of us here in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. In the essence of time, instead of introducing, next is our panel guest, instead of introducing every single one. First, I welcome our panel guests. I welcome the members of the school committee, Superintendent John Marcus. I welcome the members of the select board. I welcome Dr. Robin Grimm, the town manager. And I'll just quickly go through Stephanie Carrow, interim town clerk. Chair and the vice chair of the finance committee, Joe Row, our town accountant, Gene Fleming, our deputy moderator, Lauren Goldberg, town council, and Michael Hammond from, uh, the station manager from SMAC TV is here. And Mark Till's deal might be joining us, town engineer. So I welcome all the panelists and I do obviously welcome all the town meeting reps and we appreciate your tuning in tonight to represent the town of Stoughton as your elected members of the town meeting. All right, first of all, um, again, I like to just say we're using Zoom webinar. It's virtual and we just all need to be a little patient. I appreciate your patience through the last couple of three sessions. This technology is not perfect for our needs, but will make it work for the best of us. I ask that, uh, the process will still continue. If we do use raised hands, uh, chair of the select board Christine Howell will be writing down the, uh, people to raise their hands. And also, uh, Stephanie Carrow will be using with, along with, uh, Dave Laurie will be working with the Q and A, the, uh, the tool to, uh, watch for people to make points of order, points of information in that area. All right, this time, uh, we have to determine if we have a quorum. So we're gonna do, uh, instead of, obviously, we're doing virtual, so we can't just ask people to, uh, give us a count. We're gonna do a poll. Okay, first of all, I'm just told the IT department, we have to promote people, move people back so they can vote. I'm not trying to rush the poll, we just have to take a little time to do that. So it'll be just a moment in time. And while they're doing that, we have, uh, the quorum count will be needed like as in past nights, eighty-four. Eighty-four for a quorum. So we believe we do have a quorum, but obviously we do the polls, we know who's present. And we have, uh, well, we're waiting for that to occur. You know, obviously, we have two items we'll be discussing tonight. So we're gonna try to use polls as often as we can instead of raised hands. So, uh, there was a question out there, I believe, from Mr. Gito, if we could tell, uh, who raised their hands. No, we can't, uh, it's like a virtual type of thing. At the moment in time, we can see and look, but once he, once we clear the hands, uh, there's not a record of that. So, uh, we're gonna be, try to use polls as much as we can this evening. And just a couple of guidelines again, um, speakers, to ask questions or to make a statement or to, uh, speak at any, uh, any issue, uh, three minutes will be timing you again this evening. All right, I get the word that we're ready to do the poll. This is for attendance. Once the poll comes up, I ask you to vote present or in slash A. Please begin, you have twenty seconds. Ten seconds. Uh, I'm asked to remind department heads, do not vote. Just town meeting representatives only vote. All right, if we can end the poll and share the results, please. All right, are you present? Yes, one oh five. And actually, we, we have a record, nobody voted NA, so that's very good. So we have a hundred and five people present and accounted for. So the quorum was eighty-four, so we have a quorum to continue our meeting tonight. Here's the fourth session of a meeting. And tonight, um, we're gonna continue Article Six, reconsideration of Article Six. Six A to be precise. On the board from a couple of days, oh, excuse me for one minute, please. Can we, uh, let me just get rid of this poll and I wanna go to, uh, Christine, do you have a couple of announcements you wanna make regarding that survey? Just remind people. I apologize for, uh, forgetting you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, just a brief reminder that the remap survey is still out. We have about eighty-two folks who had, uh, completed the survey as of this afternoon, so we recirculated it. We really appreciate if you can fill that out so we can start collecting our data to inform our planning and programming for that. Um, that's all my announcements and thank you all again for being here tonight and look forward to closing out town meeting.
Thank you, Christine. All right, um, next we're going to reconsideration of Article Six A. Uh, from Monday evening, there's one, two, three, we're on the list to still speak. And we have another three to speak, so total of six right now. We're gonna start, if you recall, um, Lindsay, Lindsay Kreckler, you're up next. This is on the, uh, reconsideration of Article Six A. It takes a few minutes to unmute somebody, so, um, so everybody just be patient and once again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, this is Lindsay Kreckler, precinct seven, um, could you come back to me in a few minutes?
Sure, we'll try to come back to you, Lindsay, no problem. Next up is Eric Coleman. Eric, when you, when they unmute you, please state your name and precinct number, please. Again, I ask everybody to confine their comments to the reconsideration of Article Six A.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, what exactly is on the table now? Are we voting to reconsider or have we reconsidered?
Uh, we're discussing the merits of reconsideration. We have not voted yet, just the merits.
That's all, that's all for me.
That's it, just discussion.
Thank you.
You, is that all?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next up is Mr. Jim Curtin. It does take a moment or two to get, um, to click on somebody and bring, get someone to unmute. Jim Curtin, James Curtin. Uh, he might be under, uh, Jim Local fifteen twelve, I believe.
No, class seventeen.
Okay, he was from the other night, he might not be up tonight, okay. We're gonna move on. Next up is George Delinsky.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, George Delinsky, precinct two. I like the color of your shirt, very nice color, goes with your outfit. I did have a point of order that I was questioning on, on a previous article, and I know you ruled me out of order last time. I wonder when I'd be able to mention, uh, my point of order on a previous article.
Mr. Uh, Delinsky, I know you're, you're talking about Article twenty-four. We'll get that, we'll get to that right after we discuss and finalize our discussion on Article Six reconsideration. I will call on you at the end of that, okay? I won't forget. If I do forget, I'm sure you're gonna, you'll come right back, okay?
I will remind you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, bye now.
Bye-bye now. Next up is Forrest Lenoal.
I'm sorry, just a mistake.
That's okay, Mr. Lenoal, no problem. Uh, next up is Daniel Pezia. Dan Pezia?
My hand never got cleared.
Okay, no problem, Mr. Pezia. Brian Holmes is next up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Brian Holmes, precinct three. I don't know how far into the discussion we got, uh, on Monday night, but, uh, I, I was just trying to find out if, if the maker of the motion was on the prevailing side of this article and, uh, whether or not this motion is, is in order, uh, for reconsideration. I don't know if that, that was ever looked into, but I, I thought that there was a rule that the person had to be, who was making the motion to reconsider, had to be on the prevailing side and had to articulate that there is new information available now that was not readily available, uh, when Article Six A was voted on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Uh, I did question the maker of the motion last Monday night. He could not recall, so as a, he's a member of the town meeting. He's a town meeting representative and also a finance committee member, so I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt, moderator's discretion. And regarding new information, they claimed there was new information. Yeah, that, that'll be the factors to consider when we vote on this article for reconsideration. Obviously, the town meeting reps can take everything in consideration when they make their choices. Anything else, Mr. Holmes? You're muted. Okay, I think.
No, that, that was my question, uh, I just, again, it's pivotal to this discussion that we're even having about whether or not, uh, it's, it's a lawful motion to reconsider. And I think it was pivotal to, uh, to get an answer to that question, whether or not the maker of the motion was on the prevailing side or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up is Jim Guerin, James Guerin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Guerin, precinct six, uh, can you?
Someone just muted him? Go ahead, Jim, you somehow got muted. Could you say that again, repeat that?
Jim, Jim Guerin, precinct six.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, can you confirm for me that what I've written in my book, uh, that the, the, uh, vote on Six A last, when we, when we discussed it was ninety-nine to twenty-eight?
Let me see if I can. Is that right? Gene, Gene Fleming, uh, next to me, deputy moderator confirms that. Yes, Jim?
Thank you very much.
Is that? As amended. As amended.
Yeah, correct, thank you.
Thank you, is that all, Jim? Okay, thank you. John DeStefano. Next up is John DeStefano.
Hello, Mr. Moderator.
All right, precinct number, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, John DeStefano, precinct two. Um, I'm a little confused, if it passed ninety-nine to twenty-eight, why are we reconsidering Article Six?
What's that? Uh, I'll have town council answer that. Town council?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, um, the question of whether to allow a motion for, uh, reconsideration is within the discretion of the moderator. The moderator has allowed discussion on the question and, uh, is my understanding, intends to allow a vote on the matter. The information that's available to town meeting now includes all of the things that have been discussed, uh, during this time. There was some new informations, um, uh, provided by the finance committee or was, um, uh, proposed as new. There's also been conversations, um, about maybe there was a misunderstanding about what the goals were, et cetera. That's the kind of thing that you think about during reconsideration. Is there new information? Is there a change in circumstances? Was there enough debate originally? Should there be more? And that's up to town meeting. So that, that will be the, or those will be the, the factors that you consider when you consider whether to vote in favor or against reconsideration.
Okay, thank you.
Is that okay? Uh, you all set, Mr. DeStefano?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is Carolyn Campbell.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Campbell, precinct five.
Hi, Carolyn, go ahead.
I have a question, could the maker of the motion of reconsideration explain the new information, please? Or restate it for the purposes of those of us that don't remember from Monday night?
Sure, if I can, uh, can we bring in, uh, John Enzavino? Unmute him?
Hello?
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 Go ahead, John Enzavino.
There you go, Mr. Moderator, you disappeared and I, you didn't answer, so I didn't know what happened. I thought it might be me.
That's okay, I muted myself by accident, I, it happens to me sometimes, too.
Uh, John Enzavino, precinct four, and a member of the finance committee. And, uh, the, the issue I raised on Monday evening to, uh, to the previous speaker was the simple fact that when the summary was given, uh, and it was, it was gone through as far as what the money was, was being used for, uh, it was mentioned that, you know, the, the schools really needed the money that was being allocated to them, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I had calls from people because they were wondering if this could be reconsidered. They thought that the schools were getting some of this money. But the, the motion that was made to amend the main motion at the time was actually for two hundred thousand dollars simply to go for the overlay. It had nothing to do with the schools. And because some people, and myself included, uh, the way that was stated, uh, thought that was a little misleading that, that the schools were getting some of this money. The schools will get the same amount of money, whether it was the amended motion or the main motion proposed by the finance committee, the school is gonna get the same amount of money. The, the change to this, uh, amount of money that was being requested was strictly another two hundred thousand dollars for the overlay. You know, along with the fact that to, to all the years I've been on, think, uh, on the, uh, town meeting, to change the seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand fifty-one dollars that was being requested into, to bump that up another two hundred thousand, I feel was definitely, um, you know, expanding the scope of the article. So those are the two main reasons that, that I, I brought this up. It was from calls from, uh, from some people and myself included that thought, thought the, uh, there might have been a, a little bit of, uh, misunderstanding, shall we say, with, with the, uh, the proposed amendment, that it might have included more money for the schools, which it doesn't.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Enzavino. Before we go on, let me ask, Lou Gito has a point of order from precinct four. Lou Gito? Lou, when you're brought in, or you're, when you're able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number. All right, just a moment, please, we're having some, uh, delay here for a moment. Yeah, well, well, we have a moment, I gotta have town council, uh, discuss a little bit about scope. Go ahead, town council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know that questions were raised at the last meeting and just right now about whether the proposed, the amendment, so the, um, Six A as amended was within the scope of the article. And it seems to me there's a little bit of confusion about what scope of the article actually refers to. Scope of the article refers to a comparison between the article itself and the motion, not between the mo, the original motion and the motion that follows it. So when we're looking at the, at the motions, we're looking to see whether to fit within the scope of the article as drafted. In this case, the article as drafted did not put in any dollar amounts at all. And so any, and it said to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds. So any amount that was be included in the motion would be quote unquote, within the scope, uh, in my opinion.
Mr. Moderator, if I could? Mr. Moderator?
Is that, I think that was clear for everybody.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I, I have a, I, I have a point there. There was a chart in there showing all the funds and where they were coming from. So I, I respectfully disagree with town council that it, there was no monies or anything there. There is money in there, there was a chart in there. And not only that, it was very similar chart that was used to make the amended motion by the select board with the money that was in there.
All right, let me, uh, just, uh, one second, Mr. Gito, let me just have town council, uh, respond. Am I, I'm muted? Let me have town council respond to that. Go ahead, town council.
Thank you. Um, those proposed motions are essentially for the convenience of the body. If you look at the beginning, there's a disclaimer that says, um, proposed motions, um, if recommended are likely to be in the main motion. If not recommended, however, an alternative motion may be made at town meeting. So again, those motions are there for the convenience of the body. They're proposed motions, um, the way that they're drafted, because, uh, we don't know whether they will ultimately be moved that way. And ultimately, regardless of my opinion or, or anyone else's, the moderator makes the final call on that. Um, and in terms of, um, comfortable, being, being comfortable with the, uh, motion being made under that article, um, you know, if I had to defend that in court, I would, I, I would, I believe, under existing precedent, have no problem defending the same, so, um, that is, uh, all I have to say, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, town council. Uh, Mr. Gito? Let's go to Mr. Gito for his point of order.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I do, go ahead, state your name and precinct number for the record.
Lou Gito, precinct four. To my, uh, uh, through you or, or to you, I believe that, uh, that my, uh, compatriot from precinct four indicated at the last meeting that he did not vote in the majority and couldn't therefore be the maker of the motion.
My recollection is before he speaks, uh, that he could not recollect how he voted.
I think that you have the way to, uh, to determine that, uh, and I distinctly heard him say that he did not.
Right. At this point, Mr. Gito, uh, I hear what you're saying, but it is a, a relevant because there's three or four other people that are in line that said they were more than happy to step up and make the motion, so.
Then, then I would suggest that you have one of them do that and, and be the maker of the motion so that if this is reviewed later, that there's no legal problem with it. That's the reason that I raised the point.
Thank you, Mr. G, I'll have town council just, uh, make a, a comment on that.
Um, Mr. Moderator, as I indicated, uh, whether to allow a motion for reconsideration is up to you. The issue of whether it has to be made by a person who is in the, on the prevailing side is one that is a subject of discussion until meeting time. It is not essential that it be made by a person who voted in the majority, although that is something that moderators tend to require. In this case, however, as, as I recall, Mr. Enzavino said he wasn't, um, certain whether he did vote for or against, but there was about five other people who spoke who said, um, they had voted in, on the prevailing side and they were willing to sponsor the motion. So in my opinion, there is no legal problem whatsoever with a motion or recon, with this motion to reconsider.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. G. Uh, Carolyn Campbell, do you have a point of order?
Yeah, I have a point of order, um, right now, I have a point of, I guess, a point of information or at least that I'm seeking. And I was, I also had a follow-up question for my original, when I was originally speaking, before the point of order discussion started. We are just voting right now on whether or not to allow the motion to reconsider.
That is it, nothing else?
If we pa, if we allow the motion to reconsider, that means we are then going to discuss the new motion.
That's correct.
All right, so if we allow the motion to reconsider and then discuss the new motion, would, um, if we vote against the new motion, does the original mo, what we passed last week stand?
Let me have town council clarify that.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. As soon as we go, if, if, if we pass a vote for reconsideration, then we'll be back to the main motion as it was amended, as it was immediately before the vote. And that is what we will have to vote again if there's no further amendment made. So that's, that's where we will be.
So, okay, so if we vote, all right, so if we reconsider and bring up Article Six, are we voting then, we have, if we don't, we, um, we have to, we would be revoting the entire motion in its entirety?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. The amended, the, the amended motion, which is what you have in front of you on the screen right now, was approved at town meeting, uh, the first night, I believe.
Right.
When, if reconsideration is approved, that is, if people want to again vote on these, on these issues, then town meeting or, or discuss the issues, because this is really supposed to just be a, a discussion regarding the merits of reconsideration. If we go back after reconsideration and we go back to the amended main motion, that is sitting before us just as if we did not vote, the final vote, the two-thirds vote on, um, on the first night of town meeting. So it will require a vote.
All right, so what, but would we be voting on what was in the warrant or the new reconsideration proposed, or would that be what we would be deciding?
Mr. Moderator, through you.
Yes, go ahead, town council.
So my understanding is that if reconsideration is approved, there will be a further amendment to the main motion. And this is where it gets confusing, because if there is a further amendment to the main motion, we will vote on the amendment first and then on the main motion, depending on, uh, how that, that initial amendment vote turns out.
Okay.
We're gonna, we'll just take this a step at a time.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm just, the only, I'm asking, Mr. Moderator, and I, um, apologize, I have been, I'm confused by some of this debate. But I wanted to know, if there was questions about the merits of the reconsideration proposal, would we bring them up now or when we, uh, would discuss the, the, if it passes, then would, we would discuss the motion and the questions I have would come up then?
All we're now, let me just restate this. Right now, at this point in time, I know the motion, proposed motion's on the screen, if we can take that down. That's right, but we're still discussing the, okay. Apparently, someone asked to put this up so they can see the proposed motion. But we are discussing the merits of reconsideration only. Here on the screen is on page, no. It's on the virtual ti, wait.
Okay, so what we're. Okay, so what we've...
Everybody just hold on one minute, please. One minute, please. Thank you. Let me just check with town council. Let me just mute myself for one minute. Even, I have to admit, even the moderator was not following what's on the screen here. My apologies. On the screen here is the motion that Select Chair Christine Hall made, right, with the revised numbers shown. That's, you know, with the revised numbers that changed for the stabilization and for a tax levy. It was approved by a vote of town made.
So the one on, the one on the screen is what we voted and approved last week?
That is correct. That's 100% correct.
All right. And the motion to reconsider is proposing to reconsider to file an amendment to reduce the amount for the tax levy by 200 and something thousand dollars?
Yes, and I believe the stabilization fund, too. Isn't that what it is? Two numbers change a little bit. Yeah, but right now, I know this gets a little confusing for everybody. Right now, we're only talking about the merits, even consider reconsider.
Okay, and the merits, and the merits basically was that new information came and that fact that the people were confused whether or not the schools needed all the money and where that addition, that money from, that they're proposing to cut was going in the first place.
There is some confusion, concerns, and also other moderators, you know, usually, and I know in our town, we haven't, I don't think we ever did a reconsideration in a long time, as far as I recall.
Right.
But other moderators leave it up to, they prefer to leave it up to the wisdom of the town meeting representatives if it gets this far, and that's what I'm gonna do this evening.
No, and that's fine, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to make sure I was confused of various arguments.
Me too. I get, you know, when I'm looking at something on the screen, I agree with you, Carolyn. It's tough, that's why we're step at a time. Are you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Carolyn Campbell. Appreciate it. All right, next up is Eric Coleman.
No, I'm all set. Just, we don't need to know what the, what the change is. We just wanna know if we're gonna, you wanna know if we wanna reconsider it, that's all.
That's it, bottom line. Okay, and I'm gonna go, you all set, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna see if we can go back to Lindsey Kreckler. She has to come back to her, if we could, before we move on. And she, we can bring, allow her to be unmuted.
This is Lindsey Kreckler, precinct seven. We are, we can move on. Thank you.
All right, no problem. I just wanna give you the opportunity. Thank you very much. Next up is Cynthia Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, precinct two.
Yes, Cynthia?
Yes. I urge my fellow town meeting members to vote no reconsideration. Ninety-nine of us approve this versus 28. We weren't confused. We knew what we were doing. We accepted the selectman's amendment. We're letting some people have two bites of the apple. This is not new information. We knew Dr. Marcus cleared up the fact about the schools on Monday. So anyone who was confused just wasn't paying attention. Vote no.
You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Next up is Mighty West. Mr. West, when they unmute you, if you can state your name and precinct number, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mighty West, precinct six. I had a question, but I figured out my answer. Bye.
You're all set. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Scott Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Your precinct, Scott?
Precinct two. Scott Carrera from precinct two, Mr. Moderator. The concerns and the merits on the reconsideration is the expansion of the article, which is 200,000. Town council made a statement at, when I asked a question about it, she said it was up to the moderator to catch it, and that you missed it, so we just go along with it, and that she would defend it in court. I don't, I don't care for the statement. We'll defend it in court. We should just try to avoid something like that.
Scott, Mr. Carrera, can let me just clarify something. When it comes to this point for these issues, scope is debatable by different sides. Different moderators look at it differently.
I'm not accusing you as the moderator.
No, no, I'm just letting you know where I stand, but go ahead.
I'm just telling you what was simply said to us. We're getting opinions from other people and we're supposed to abide by them. Opinions are opinions. Everybody has an opinion. But a fact is a fact. The finance committee voted on their numbers, the original numbers. They were locked in, given to us. We had a discussion and a proper vote. That makes the article what it is. To come by and say, "We're just gonna amend it and expand it", that means we might as well not put numbers on any of the articles that come to the finance committee and just wait till they get expanded and add anything you want to it, because somebody will say, "Hey, I'll defend it." So I'm not saying vote either way for it. I'm just giving you scenario that happened, facts. Things were voted on in good faith. Numbers were given. I don't think expanding articles has ever been allowed like this. And we've been called on the carpet when people try to do something like that. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera. Okay, next up is John Rock. Mr. Rock, when you are able to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hi, John Rock, precinct three. Did I make it on the air?
Yes, you're all set to go.
Okay. I am against this motion to reconsider. I am in total agreement with my fellow town meeting member Cynthia Walsh. The arguments were well presented on both sides when this was originally considered at the special town meeting like a week or so ago. I think people understand, understood the implications very well. I don't think people were confused. They voted overwhelmingly to pass this amendment. And, you know, I think it serves no useful purpose to revisit all the arguments again. So I'm totally against reconsidering the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Next up is Sean Carr. Mr. Carr, when you get a chance to unmute yourself, please state your name and precinct number, please.
All right, hi. Sean Carr, precinct four. Through Mr. Moderator, twice you have said that the number on our screen are the original numbers that we approved earlier in the special town meeting. That's not accurate. If you look at the tax levy raise and appropriate line, 483-531, what we approved was 283-531. Secondly, the stabilization fund movement, what's shown on the screen is 959-051. What we approved earlier in special town meeting was 759-051. So the numbers on the screen that's been mentioned twice now are not what we...
Mr. Carr, let me explain. Can you hold on one second? You can further talk. Let me have town council just look at that and answer that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. As you may recall, originally, we had a motion for 6A that was a proposed motion, which is in the warrant, that was supposed to be made by the finance committee, or would have if the finance committee agreed with it. The finance committee actually did go ahead and make that motion, and then there was a motion to amend by the select board chair. Once that motion to amend was made, it was put up like this, and this is what was reviewed, and these new numbers under tax levy raise and appropriate and stabilization fund were presented. Chairman Howe explained the rationale behind these changes, and then there was a vote on the amendment. That passed, and then there was a vote on the amended main motion, which was this. So this was the amended main motion, and this is what was passed, 99 to 28.
99 to 28 on the other night?
Yes, sir.
So we, and as two prior speakers have already said, we've already approved these funds. We've already voted on it. We've already had finance committee adjudicate on it. We've already got the two-thirds. Let's stop going back again at the well and get a bite at the apple. Any euphemism you wanna heard numerous times. Let's be done with it, 'cause we've already vetted it, we've already gone through it, and it should be considered done and voted on. Otherwise, let's just go relitigate every single motion in here.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Next up is Pat Colburn. Oh, excuse me, one second. One second. There's a point of order. Let me stop everybody right there for one moment. We have a point of order from Carmel Drews. Carmel Drews, can you unmute her? When you have a chance, unmute yourself. Carmel, please state your name and precinct number and make your point of order.
Carmel Drews, precinct five. It's a point of information. I just noted that the vote to approve the amendment was 79-49, and the vote to approve the amended motion was 99-28. So those numbers are, match up differently, and it seems important for folks to keep that in mind. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Carmel. Appreciate that. Next, Pat Colburn.
Pat Colburn, precinct four. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome.
I urge people to vote for this reconsideration, and I'm not too proud to say I was very confused the other night. I've never experienced a town meeting like this where so much information bypassed the finance committee and where we didn't have substitute motions or amended motions in front of us. And I understand this is different. It's virtual and there's a virtual table, but in the past, we always, we had a rule that 48 hours in advance, we needed to have the motions in our hands, and I wasn't following the numbers as they were given because I missed it on the virtual town meeting table. So I wasn't even following the amended numbers because I didn't have them in front of me. So I was very confused, and if I'm the only one, it won't be the first time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat Colburn. Right now, Ed Trumpfio, can we bring him in? He has a point of order. And we still have one, two, three, four, five people that would like to talk on the speaker's list here.
Yeah, I just want a statement made by a previous speaker. The finance committee...
What's your point of order? Ed, what's your point of order?
Point of order is a little bit of misinformation on the motion that is presently on the screen.
Misinformation?
Yes, it was made a statement by a previous speaker. The finance committee never even saw the amended motion, the 200,000. It didn't come to the finance committee. It wasn't voted on by the, it wasn't even voted by the finance committee. It was an afterthought by the board a couple weeks later, after we were all said and done. And as you all know, you got the motion on Friday, the day before town meeting on Monday, 'cause they had a hearing about this.
Right, Ed, let me stop, Mr. Trumpfio, let me stop you. That's not really...
That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next up, Jean Fleming. There's one, I think, five people I mentioned. Jean, state your name and precinct number, please.
Jean Fleming, precinct seven. Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Okay, Jean Fleming has...
Well done.
Question? Cynthia Walsh. And I just want everybody to know there are four people still in the speaker list here that would like to talk. Just one minute, let me just make a note here. We're gonna do this by, can we do a poll on this, or? I like to do this a poll, just so we have a clear count. Moving the question. Just, we have a lot of polls tonight. Well, this is just to cut off the bait, move the question right now. We're just trying to get a poll up. Just takes a few minutes. Appreciate everybody's patience. Since we have a lot of polls available to this evening, I'd like this, just make it clear, make them, you know, put them to use, I believe, is the best way to say that. Be just another moment or so. Uh, yes, just a simple poll that says move the question. Yes or no? We don't need abstain, so, no. Just yes or no? Okay, while we're getting that poll ready, this will be to cut off the bait, move the question, and there are four people in line, just so everybody knows. Four people are in line to talk. Now, feedback was from Cynthia Walsh, but still Cynthia, you're on the list here. Yeah, Pat Colburn's all set, Jean Fleming's all set. We're just keeping a list. Thank you to Christine Howe. She has a list in front of us, so it's all up front. Now, the poll has been put forth on the screen. Please vote now. You have 20 seconds. This is the move the question, cut off debate. 10 seconds. Okay, if we can end the poll and share the results. 98 yes, 14 no. Motion to cut off the bait needs a two-thirds, two-thirds, and that passes. 98 to 14. 98 yes, 14 no. All right, now, since we're cutting off the bait, we're moving right to reconsider. Just bear with me for one minute. Yeah, reconsider poll, we have a poll for that. All right, we have a poll to take a vote on reconsideration of Article 6A. Want me to restart? No. Okay, go ahead. We got about 20 seconds to vote on this. The poll's in front of you. As it says, motion to reconsider Article 6A, straightforward. Yes, no, abstain. All right, 10 seconds. Okay, if we can end the poll and share the results, please. All right, we have 46 yes, 64 no, three abstentions. All right, we have 46 yes, 64 no, three abstentions. So 46 yes, 64 no, three abstentions. Motion to reconsider Article 6A fails. 46 yes, 64 no, three abstentions. All right, so now that means we just move on.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, thank you for the time and thank you to the town meeting members for their time.
Thank you, Ms. Anzamino. Can we, okay, thank you for clearing that other motion. Okay, just one more thing to do this evening. We need to, on Monday night, we had a little issue with Article 24. There was a typo on the PowerPoint and then also on the book. If you turn to, just so you can see the typo and everybody should not have any disagreement with it, on page 32 of your warrant book, in the proposed motion, it says move to approve Article 25. That was a typo, it's actually 24. Article 25 was dismissed on October 19th, 2020, Monday night, the first night of session. And just for clarification, Article 25 was moved to dismiss along with other articles and the vote was by raised hand, yes, 123, no, 5, so it passed by a clear majority. All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion to reconsider 24 solely for the purpose of correcting a typo on Article 24. And just as for the record, as you know, the motion incorrectly referenced Article 25, which was previously dismissed on Monday, October 19th. So could I have a motion?
Show move.
Motion made by Jean Fleming, seconded by Cynthia, excuse me, by Christine Howe. It's been a long week already, my apologies, Christine. Okay, motion's amended. I'm going to do, I don't think we have a poll on this. No, I'll just go for raised hand, this is very simple. It's solely for the purpose of correcting a typo on Article 24. And before I do that, I promised Mr. Delinsky I would bring him in on this and hopefully he understands what we're doing here. Can we allow Mr. Delinsky to unmute himself? He wanted to talk about this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Delinsky, precinct two. I was questioning through you, the town council, as to the way the vote was taken when the chairman of the board of select people read the motion to move to appropriate, approve Article 25 and we all vote, the results were 92 to 35 to 2, that the legality of this...
Well, can I ask you, Mr. Delinsky, did you hear what we just, we just made a motion to reconsider Article 24 solely for the purpose of correcting the typo on that page 32 of the warrant?
We want to correct the typo or you want to correct the motion?
Well, we're going to do a couple of things here. Let's first correct the typo, at least. It's correcting the typo in the motion. All right? Let me hear from town council, just so. I only play a lawyer at night, I'm not the real lawyer.
Mr. Moderator, in my opinion, it's appropriate to reconsider the article solely to correct the reference in the motion. I think everyone agrees that it is a typo and it just needs to be corrected. This is a very formal way of correcting it, but certainly will make the record clear that it was corrected.
And do we only need one motion?
We'll do this one, you're doing a motion to reconsider solely for the purpose of correcting that typo and then you'll do a motion to correct the reference to Article 20, to Article 25 in the motion under Article 24, which is what I believe you are planning to do. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to, hopefully that's clear to everybody. This is solely for the purpose of correcting the typo on Article 24. That was just explained to you by the town council and I referenced it on page 32 of the warrant manual. So we're going to do a raised hand to make it very simple. All those in favor of Jean Fleming's motion, please raise your hand now. That's to reconsider? Yes, to reconsider Article 24, solely for the purpose of correcting the typo. To reconsider. 10 seconds, please, this is to reconsider. Article 24. Can I get a count of the raised hands? Okay, all right, can we clear the hands? We're clearing the hands right now. Okay, we're good, okay, all those who oppose reconsidering, raise your hand now, please. 10 sec. Can I get a count on the raised hands? Five. All right, motion to reconsider passes. 99 yes, 5 no. All right, one more motion to take up this evening. Just getting it clarified, one minute, one moment, please. Okay, I'll just, I'll ask for a motion to correct the motion that was made Monday evening, October 26th, in Article 24 by properly stating the reference referencing Article 24. So, ask for a motion.
Second.
Second by Christine Howe. So this is just to pretty much make that motion for Article 24. It was made by Jean Fleming, seconded by Christine Howe. All right, I want to take a, any discussion, hopefully there's no discussion. Is there a point of order from somebody? Dave Laurie, point of order? Dave, when you're free, if you can, unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and very simple question through you. It's basically, are we only voting the edited, edited aspects or is this opening up debate of the full motion?
Well, Article 24 passed Monday evening.
Right, but if it's a revote, my point is...
A revote.
It's a revote of what? Is it only the changes of two digits of 24 to 25, I mean 25 to 24?
Yes, that's all we're doing.
Vote on the whole motion?
No, that's all we're doing. The vote on the motion to correct the numbers from 25 to 24.
All right, that's it, thank you.
That's all we're doing, it was already discussed, debated and actually passed. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can get them, let it pass by. 92 to 35 and two abstentions, that was the vote on Monday evening. 92 yes, 35 no, two extensions, so it was a clear majority. So, so I want to proceed. Motion is on, are you okay, Dave? Okay, thank you. Motion's on the floor. And this is to, just to correct the motion that was made Monday evening, Monday evening, October 26th, in Article 24 to reference the correct Article number 24. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. This is just by raised hand? Can we have the hands cleared first? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please raise your hands now. 10 seconds. Yes. Okay, all right, can I have the count of the raised hands? All right, can we clear the hands, please? Yeah, I'll clear, okay, all those that oppose that motion, please raise your hand now. 10 more seconds. Okay, can I get a count, please, of the raised hands? Eight. That motion passes. 98 yes, eight no's. 98 yes, eight no's. So that's 24, that ends all the articles we're discussing this evening.
Mr. Moderator?
Jean, before I just recognize you, I just want to thank all the town meeting reps for coming this evening. I know it's the fourth session of a special town meeting. We appreciate your time and effort into this. We want to thank all the panelists, the town manager, Dr. Graham, the school superintendent, John Marcus, Dr. John Marcus and the school committee members and the select board and all the other panelists, the finance committee members, everybody that participated this evening. We appreciate your effort and support and also like to reach out and thank town council for her efforts this evening. And I'd like to also thank deputy moderator Jean Fleming for her, all her efforts, sitting by my side and trying to move the process along. It's been a difficult time some nights, but been challenging too. So Jean, I recognize you for that motion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve the October 19th, 2020 special town meeting on Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, at 8:05 PM.
Oh, you muted, muted one more time. Sorry, we had a little technical issue there. Jean's going to state that motion one more time.
I move to dissolve the October 19th, 2020 special town meeting on Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, at 8:05 PM. Cynthia.
Cynthia Walsh, seconded. I also wanted to do a big shout out to the NAPAC providing all the assistance and technical help if it is even possible for a majority.
I appreciate the MAPC, all the technicians out there putting up with some of the glitches we, you know, I made here, my own here. We appreciate their support and effort. So the motion was made and seconded to dissolve the town meeting. We're going to do a raised hand vote to have a count on it. Can we clear the hands? Be good to go? All those in favor, raise your hand now, please. 10 seconds. Okay, can I get the number of raised hands? Can we get, clear the hands? And also, I did neglect to mention Michael Hammond from the TV station called Stoughton Media Access Corporation for being here every evening during town meeting and making sure the recording occurs flawlessly. Thank you, Michael. All right, all those opposed, raise your hand now. 10 seconds. And could I get a count, please? Motion. Okay, three. Motion to dissolve the town meeting passes, 100 yes, three no's. 100 yes, three no's. A few people want to stay on, but I think we're going to call this a night. Thank you all again and have a good evening. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.